Good morning. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm president of Minneapolis City Council and I'm joined this morning by Councilmember Blong Yang, who is the Chair of the Public Safety, Civil Rights and Emergency Management Committee of the City of Minneapolis, my colleague. And this morning, we have the pleasure of presenting a resolution and then also awards to young people who have won a contest that's been sponsored by our Civil Rights Department for, from our Civil Rights Commission for the last nine years, an essay contest about challenges in our society in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So Councilmember Yang, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to read the resolution really quickly and then bring forth everyone here who are the winners and also the departments. Velma, do you want to just come up with the three folks who came today? So this is a resolution honoring the 2014 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest winners. Whereas the Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights was established in 1975 to implement the civil rights policies through public information, education, mediation, conciliation, and adjudication. And whereas the Commission provides leadership in the areas of civil rights and carries forward the policies of the city through the prevention and elimination of bias and discrimination. And whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. believed that liberty, justice, and freedom were the inalienable rights of all men, women, and children, and that all people were equal in the sight of God and deserving of dignity and self-worth. And whereas, bear with me, whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a recipient of the Nobel Prize, became a national hero whose birthday has been declared a national holiday by this nation's government. And whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. inspired people and nations worldwide to strive in nonviolent manners for the human rights, civil liberties, and economic guarantees, rightfully do people of all races. And whereas the Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights established the annual Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest in 2005 as an opportunity to continue and renew this endeavor through education. And whereas all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students who reside in Minneapolis were eligible to participate by submitting one essay with their answers to this topic. On August 28th, 1963, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. delivered his "I Have a Dream" speech. The questions: In what ways has Dr. King's vision for the future been realized? What do you think Dr. King would think about the status of civil rights today? Reflect upon and describe the current state of civil rights in Minneapolis and in the United States? And what is your dream for the future of civil rights? Whereas the Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights, upon the celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, selected the following prize winners from each grade level. For eighth grade, first place, Grace Klage from Susan B. Anthony Middle School. Second place, Nate Murray, Lake Harriet Community School. Third place, Annabelle Chusy, Lake Harriet Community School. For seventh grade, first place, Amani Samuels, St. Anthony or Anthony Middle School. Second place, Clara Hilmer, Susan B. Anthony Middle School. Third place, Ikra Daher and Sullivan Communications Center. Sixth grade, first place, Camilla Pedrosa Garcia Sanford Middle School. Second place, Maggie Anderson Sanford Middle School. And third place, Mia Rucci, Susan B. Anthony Middle School. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of, by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that the Minneapolis City Council honors and appreciates all of those students who participated in the 2014 Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest and gives special recognition to those who won first, second, and third place. And I have the distinct privilege of presenting this nice little gift card. It's a pretty nice amount, $300 for Camilla Pedrosa Garcia. Camilla, right here. And we, this was quite a rush, but we will have resolutions for each of the winners in each of the grade levels. And so I'm going to pass this over to Director Corville.
So, good morning. My name is Velma Corville. I'm the Director in the Department of Civil Rights here in the City of Minneapolis. And I just wanted to also recognize another individual who's here in the room. Lee Zoots is the Minneapolis Civil Rights Commission Liaison. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Minneapolis Civil Rights Commission, it is, it is an entity in the city, 21 members, appointed by the mayor and city council, and they are extremely important in assisting the Minneapolis Civil Rights Department in its complaint, complaint handling process, but also it's extremely important in reaching out to communities like these young people here and engaging them on civil rights work, the history, the legacy, and what, and what the future will be like for these young people relative to civil rights in the City of Minneapolis. Last night, at the Minneapolis Convention Center, we had our closing ceremony for our 50th anniversary celebration, recognizing the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. And we had, most of the students who won the essay contest were at the event last night. So you saw Councilmember Yang hand off the $300 first place award to Ms. Pedrosa Garza because she was not able to be with us last night. But these other students also were award winners. In addition to the $300 gift certificate from Barnes &amp; Noble that the first place winners received, there's a $200 gift certificate for the second place winner, a $100 gift certificates for the third place winner. So they were all rewarded for outstanding work in answering the question that Councilmember Yang identified. Typically, when we do the celebration at the, at the city council, we let the first place winners read you just a little bit of an excerpt from the essay that won them, recognition here this morning, but also a nice little treat as a result of their hard work. And so I'm going to pass over these placards to Amani Samuels and also to Camilla Pedrosa Garza, the first place winners from, from eighth grade and seventh grade, sixth grade and seventh grade, I'm sorry. And I'm going to let, pass that to Amani, and then I'm going to pass that one to Camilla. And I think people would really want to know what you had to say about the question.
I think Martin Luther King would see today as an unfinished project. He would tell us blacks and whites to rise above. We were all created equal, but really, right now, we aren't. Not yet. I have a dream that there's no achievement gap. I have a dream that the little black girl can get help on her math homework from her parents. I have a dream that black is no longer the definition of ghetto. Half a century ago, children so young that they couldn't pronounce the word "freedom" fought for prosperity. I dream that for the children of today and tomorrow.
Racism isn't as strong as it was before, but it's still happening in many ways. I now realize how terribly we have been treated and how Americans from the U.S. are mistaken about us. I believe that is why most Hispanic students in our schools and community remain in the same groups or are only friends with other Hispanics. We're not very different from each other, you and I. We are both human beings that were created by God. We should all be treated right. We should not be judged by our skin color or our race, or even by the language we speak. We should all just draw hands and become one.
Thank you very much, and we'll begin our regular meeting.
Saw Craig, I didn't see Spencer. He's got glasses on. I recognize him. I didn't recognize him with the glasses. Sorry it's taking me a minute to get in my computer.
I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We are all present this morning. Our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and there's a motion by myself to add under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution designating August 2nd through the 5th, 2014, as Meeting Professionals International Days in the City of Minneapolis. We have this great convention here. So the agenda, I would move to amend the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting and the adjourned session of July 18th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next item on our agenda is Committee of the Whole report, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three items on our agenda for today. The first is approving the appointment of Scott Neal to the city's Audit Committee for a term ending January 2nd, 2018. Item number two is to approve definitions of equity and racial equity that are part of our adoption of goals, values, and strategic directions. And item number three is to approve an open data policy and implementation schedule as revised and amended. And I will move approval of all three items, and I'd like to make a comment on item number three.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none on item three, Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you. And I just wanted to recognize, this is, this is a pretty significant culture change that we are moving forward with in the city, but one that is not out of step with what's happening around the country. Open data policies are becoming the norm rather than the exception. It's a way of putting sunshine on the work that government does. Already in the state of Minnesota, we have a Data Practices Act that requires us to reveal all defined public information as opposed to non-public information. And this is really a mechanism for how we're going to make that public information available. I am very excited about it. I think it is part of making us more transparent. I think it is also part of how we inspire creativity through access to information. I also want to thank Councilmember Andrew Johnson, as well as our Information Technology Director, Otto Dahl. Mr. Dahl put together a great team and worked with department heads on what the policy would be, and Councilmember Johnson really took this on as an initiative. He's very passionate about this work, and I want to thank him for bringing this to fruition. This is just the start, I will say. Culture change is not fast, but I'm excited about this beginning. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the Committee of the Whole report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report with that committee's Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 13 items for approval this morning. Our most notable item being the appointment of Craig Taylor to be the Executive Director of CPED and the MCDAs, and I'll pull that item. Item number two is moving forward on bond issuance for Riverton Community Housing. Item three are changes to our taproom ordinance. Item four is requested to be deleted from the agenda. Item five is a license revocation. Six are our liquor business and gambling license applications. Number seven are conditions on an operating license for cedar tobacco and hookah. Item eight is a resolution approving a license settlement conference for the Petal Pub. Item nine is a business operating conditions settlement with Southside Electronics. Ten are changes to our rehab support program and emergency relief fund. This is to put a little additional money into the tornado ravaged North Side properties that are remaining that need work. Item 11 is conditions on a rental license. Twelve is authorizing staff to submit deed applications for redevelopment grants for a number of projects. And item 13 is accepting and appropriating grants from deed and the Environmental Response Fund for similar projects. With that, I'll move items two through 13 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, items two through 13. I just have one question, Councilmember Goodman, on item four. I apologize, I've been out of touch. I sent you an email.
What's happening? Okay, what's happening with this is they did not pay a fee. As a result of not paying a fee, we revoke the license. They then came in and paid the fee, but determined that they would not renew the license. So given all of that, we are removing it from the agenda. They've paid the fee, we're not going to move forward with them being in operation any longer.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. Any other questions or discussion on items two through 13? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. On item one, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move approval of item number one, which is the appointment of Craig Taylor. I had the good fortune to both participate in the interview process as well as participate in the public hearing in our committee with regard to Craig's appointment, and have had an ample opportunity to speak to this issue, but I wanted to invite the mayor, who is here, to say a few words on behalf of Mr. Taylor as well.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also have had a lot of opportunity to speak to Mr. Taylor's accomplishments and his dedication to the city, but I don't think enough can be said, frankly. His lifelong commitment to the City of Minneapolis, his deep and wide experience on a host of economic development issues, the work he's done in the community to build and grow the City of Minneapolis through his work at the University of Minnesota, his work in the private sector. I think he brings all of that to our city, along with a deep passion and an abiding love for the City of Minneapolis, which I think at the core of the work that we need moving forward is that vision for the city, but also that vision for the city's people. And I know he cares about both a great deal. I have long said that I wanted to make sure that we got our selections right for the open positions in leadership here in the city, and that it was more important to get it right than to get it quick. And I, I know, I know today we are getting it right, and I appreciate the support for Mr. Taylor, and look forward to a really, really great working relationship and the great work that he's going to do with us and for us.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Goodman, did you move Mr. Taylor?
I did.
You did, okay, thank you very much. Clerk, call the roll on item one.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. On item one, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing two items forward for approval. The first is Transportation Engagement Efforts, approving the use of 44,000 of Hennepin County's second 7.5%, as we call it, Neighborhood Revitalization Program funds to support transportation engagement efforts for the Sumner Glenwood neighborhood and the Heritage Park Neighborhood Association. And the second item is a resolution authorizing execution of grant agreements with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency relating to applications for the Environmental Assistant Grant Program. And I will move both items forward.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussions on, discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda. It is, excuse me, it is regarding the proposed charter amendment relating to municipal filing fees, and what is moving forward is the title and ballot language that you will see when you vote on the ballot. And so I will move approval of this item, and which we will see on the ballot for the general election November 4th, 2014.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the IGR report, one item. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report with that committee's Chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items. The first item is authorize an agreement with the University of Minnesota for Minneapolis Police to provide bomb detection services for the 2014 Minnesota Vikings football games at TCF Bank Stadium, an estimated cost of $28,860 to be reimbursed by the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority. Item two, authorize a contract with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority in the amount of $108,825 to support a sergeant investigator for one year in relation to the NPHA Housing Choice Program. And item three is to authorize a contract with Echo in the amount of $54,750 in support of the If You See Something, Say Something Public Awareness Campaign. And with that, I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report with that committee's Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Forwarding, oh, thank you. Forwarding, a total of, sorry, my papers got shuffled. Thanks. Six items today. Oh, 10 items. Thank you. Item one, the Land Conveyance Passage Resolution authorizing the city to act as a pass-through agent by accepting the conveyance of excess land from the Minnesota Department of Transportation and conveying to the adjacent property owners, 1812 Franklin Avenue Southeast. Nine votes required for that action. Eighth Street Southeast Reconstruction Project Passage Resolution for the improvements to the proposed area and receive the cost estimate and direct the city engineer to prepare special assessments against those benefited properties. And that public hearing will be set for September 9th, 2014. Item eight is the Eighth Street Southeast Street Lighting Project Passage Resolution locating the improvements for the proposed project, receive the cost estimates, and have a public hearing on that item September 9th, 2014. Item four is authorized amendment to the contract with Municipal Builders Incorporated increasing the prices of $73.93 per square foot of concrete repair, work performed by the Fridley Filtrine Plant Split Project. Item five is a special boulevard permit above, approve the special boulevard permit application submitted by the South Hennepin Special Service District Advisory Board to pave select boulevards within the South Hennepin District. The item six, and you handed out some amendment to that motion, and I'll read it in its entirety, authorizes execution of a three-year contract with Specialized Environmental Technologies Incorporated for yard waste processing for 100% of the city's yard waste volume, with the option of adding source separate organics processing, should the citywide organics processing be initiated. And the addition to item six is a motion that has been distributed directing public work staff to conduct a traffic study on adjacent roads near and around the Specialized Environment Technologies Transfer Site on Malcolm Street Avenue Southeast and report back to the Transportation Public Works Committee in the first quarter of 2015. Item seven refers to, and these will all be referred to the Ways and Means Committee. Item seven is the 45th Avenue North Irving Avenue North Alley Reconstruction Project. Pass a resolution for the work to proceed, adopting special assessments for that project, and a resolution requesting the board of estimate taxation to authorize the city's issuance of sales and assessment bonds for that project. This action will require nine votes. Disposal and hauling of excavation spoils and increase in contract with Waste Management of Minnesota Incorporated by 250,000 for the hauling and disposal of additional excavation spoils from the Linden Yards. Item nine is the Cedar Avenue Sidewalk Modification Project. Passage of a resolution increasing the appropriation of the Cedar Avenue Sidewalk Modification Project by 400,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund due to increased project costs resulting from bids received higher than the original cost estimate. And the final action is accept the low responsive bid of Thompson and Sons Construction for sidewalk and lighting replacement on Cedar Avenue. Early signature by the mayor is requested for that item. Madam President, I move all items with the adjustment to item six being noted in my report.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report, and item six is amended by the Chair. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a comment on number six.
Why don't you go ahead?
All right. First of all, I appreciate that the Chair is moving the staff direction to look at the traffic study in the area. I just wanted to give a little background to my colleagues. This is a contract that we are awarding for a company to handle 100% of our yard waste. It's in the second ward, close to the border of St. Paul. It has been tucked deep into an industrial area for a long time, but now development with the Green Line and other things that have been happening over there. Development is coming. You've probably heard of the Destination Brewery Surly that's going to be opening. That's going to be very near, nearby this. And... to look at the traffic study in the area. I just wanted to give a little background to my colleagues. This is a contract that we are awarding for a company to handle 100% of our yard waste. It's in the Second Ward, close to the border of St. Paul. It has been tucked deep into an industrial area for a long time, but now development with the Green Line and other things that have been happening over there, development is coming. You've probably heard of the Destination Brewery Surly that's going to be opening. That's going to be very nearby this, and there's already been a lot of work we've been trying to do and create some infrastructure to make this possible. Those of you who've been here a while, we recall all the efforts we've put into trying to create what we've been calling Granary Road, and we've been unsuccessful because of the railroads. I've had a lot of meetings with Councilmember in St. Paul about what we're going to do there, because there really is not the St. Paul infrastructure either to handle the trucks and the traffic that's going on there. I support this, SKB or this company in general has been a good company. We need somewhere to do this, so the Second Ward is taking this hit for the team here to make sure we have somewhere to bring our solid waste and to deal with it. Also, another piece of this contract, though, says when we move toward our organics, there's the potential to bring this here. If any of you have ever had a yard waste or organics drop-off site in your area, you know that it comes not only with truck traffic, but potentially odors and other issues, so I think we want to watch this very carefully. It's going to be a real trick, I think, balancing this with the development that's certainly coming to this area there. So I think this traffic study will be very important. I'm hoping to bring CPAD into the mix here, because on the one hand, we have a lot of people working for some very significant economic development in the area, and also to work with St. Paul, so this will be key, and I think that you can expect to hear more about it in the future.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a clarifying question for the chair of TPW with regards to the motion. I'm just wondering, you know, with this traffic study, if we do this traffic study and we get bad news by the time of the reporting, I mean, what's our next step? And I ask that because, as I remember it, this bidding process had four groups that bid on this process, and of the four groups, three of the groups just didn't have a site, and that's why SET was awarded this contract, and so I'm wondering, you know, if we do get the bad news with regard to the traffic study, what happens next?
Councilmember Reich, we also have staff here if you'd like to. Mr. Herbert Holt is here if you'd like to refer to him or whatever.
Yeah, I will certainly refer to staff if there's availability, but just generally speaking, there's not really an anticipation of that much new traffic generated. However, we shouldn't make assumptions, and we also want to look at the area as a whole. I think this is more about the overall impacts of the whole area versus just the anticipated traffic increase on this site, which by all estimates is marginal, but I'll let staff elaborate further if they wish.
Mr. Herbert Holt? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, as far as the traffic increase due to 100% of the yard waste being brought to SET or SKB on Malcolm, I can only speak to the trucks that are affected by our collection contract. From preliminary studies that we've done, just in looking at the number of loads that we've collected, we anticipate in the range of, on average, 10 or less trucks on a daily basis.
And I guess Councilmember Yang's question, too, was there were a number of bidders. What would happen if the study showed that it was, that there were problems? What would happen?
Yeah, Madam President. As far as that, if that ended up, unfortunately, being a site that we couldn't utilize, I'd probably have to refer to our attorneys in that, and we'd probably have to go off for re-proposal and, you know, kind of revisit the whole area there as far as what availability of a potential site or two would be.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, and I just wanted to respond with, I guess, some of my hopes and expectations would be that the traffic study might yield some recommendations for potential improvements. Everybody is pretty convinced that we need another road and better access in and out there, whether it's on the St. Paul or the Minneapolis side, or even on both. Right now, actually, a lot of people are using a private road that St. Paul essentially gave away, and there's a fear that the private property owner will no longer want to be granting access to all these trucks on that road on the St. Paul side, so we'll see. But there may even be other recommendations. I also think if we look at the traffic study and we're thinking about the organics pickups and what we're going to do with that, we may want to then be careful, and that may give us a little bit of leverage to say, well, let's open up another bid and see if there's some other alternatives, because that will add more than the, potentially more than the 10 trucks a day during, and that's during the peak of our yard waste. I mean, right now, the facility's taking 50% of all our yard waste, and so that's where we know that that's about 10 trucks a day during the peak seasons in the spring and fall, I believe. So I think that's an issue. My hope is that this will also set us up in a good shape in three years when the contract comes up again. Do we want to renew? What do we want to do about it and other options? And if I'm, if my expectations are way off base, Mr. Herbert Holt can correct me.
Mr. Herbert Holt.
Madam President, councilmembers, I'd like to bring forward to the fact that prior to my being here, a dozen years or so ago, this site and SET actually did handle 100% of the city's yard waste at that time, and the number of loads, we did an analysis, the number of loads per year hasn't varied much, you know, in the last 15 years.
Thank you. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to beat a dead horse on this, but, you know, with regards to this piece, you know, in three years, we can, if things don't work out, I mean, we can look at other places, but from what I can gather of the contracts, I can speak to two of them, and two of them had proposed sites that were not on sites that we probably would have wanted or allowed. One of the sites would have been, you know, at the Upper Harbor Terminal. The other site would have been at the Bassett Creek area, and my understanding is that both those places probably would not have been good places. And I can't speak to the third one, but we're doing this, you know, and I'm just hoping this thing works out.
Any further discussion on the Ways and Means Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Misano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye on the Transportation and Public Works Report.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are twelve items that Ways and Means will be bringing forward for your approval today. The first is our two legal settlements. The second item is the 2014 City of Minneapolis Charitable Campaign and approving participation of our eight charitable fundraising partners. There's also a item accepting the donation of digital billboard display time from Clear Channel Outdoor, as well as the donation of public service announcements from Comcast Cable, authorizing to execute professional services agreement with JQP for a ADA facility compliance survey. The sixth item is the passage of a resolution accepting gift of three-week internship from Dakota, excuse me, Dakota County Technical College. Then we're authorizing the release of the request for proposals for financing options for Nicollet Mall reconstruction. The eighth item is the increase to a contract with Advanced Public Safety for a new not-to-exceed total of $1,192,581, and authorizing to extend that contract for an additional three years. The ninth item is the information technology terms and conditions for future requests for proposals at IT's discretion. The tenth item is the increase to the UNICEF Managed Services Contract. The other item here is the passage of resolutions for two collective bargaining agreements with the Fire Chiefs and Emergency Communications Supervisors Unit, and the twelfth item is the Target Center Renovation Project Labor Agreement. This has been previously handled, so I'm going to move approval of the items one through 11 and the deletion of item 12 from the agenda.
Councilmember Quincy has moved items one through 11 on the Ways and Means Report, deleting item 12. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Misano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have honorary resolutions, and the first is a honorary resolution, passage of a resolution declaring September 2014 Hunger Action Month in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have an honorary resolution, which we read before the committee, council meeting honoring the 2014 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. essay contest winners. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a passage of a resolution urging the Minnesota Vikings and the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority to design a bird-safe stadium. Any discussion on that resolution? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify, there's been some communication and some emails that came in. The purpose of this resolution is to respectfully ask the Sports Facilities Authority and the Vikings to reconsider their decision about the glass and investing in bird-safe glass and to kind of follow the recommendations of the Stadium Implementation Committee and the comments of the Department of Natural Resources. I just wanted to be clear with the general public is that we don't have any authority, and this resolution isn't attempting to and isn't able to order the Sports Facility Authority to do anything with the stadium, but hopefully our voice can be joined with other voices, and they can make the best decision.
Councilmember Glidden.
I would just ask to be added as an author.
Councilmember Misano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to support what Councilmember Gordon was saying in regards to the Viking Stadium. I believe this is a way to show the seriousness of the environmental issue at hand. It shows support for an important part of our ecosystem. It acknowledges that the recommendation of the Stadium Implementation Committee is different than its current direction. I also worry a little bit about what's the power of a resolution? What can a resolution do? I do think resolutions like this state and represent the policy position of the council, if that's the will of the council today. I think it should signal to external, internal partners that this environmental change and this past agreement is important to us, so I also commit to further working with intergovernmental partners and other entities that were part of this agreement to help influence this direction forward, if that's what we decide to do today.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And next, we have the honorary resolution, which was added to the agenda, designating August 2 through 5, 2014, as Meeting Professionals International Days in the city of Minneapolis, allowing the 35W Bridge to be lit with Minneapolis' brand colors. Any discussion on that honorary resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have under motions, a motion by Councilmember Quincy that regular payrolls of city employees under council jurisdiction for the month of September 2014 be approved and ordered paid. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under motions, we also have a motion by Councilmember Yang to concur with the determination of the Director of Regulatory Services that the property at 711 Newton Avenue North constitutes an immediate hazard to public health and safety and approve a waiver of the 60-day waiting period that other procedures, as set out in Chapter 249, may be implemented immediately. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice. Councilmember Gordon introduces the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referral to zoning and planning, amending requirement that signage be placed on the primary building wall. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Andrew Johnson to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to animals and fowl and other small animals for first reading and referral to Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee repealing the requirement for written consent. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Pursuant to notice, Councilmember Frye introduces the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to fire and police protection. Fire Prevention Bureau for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee amending existing provisions related to commercial hood and exhaust cleaning. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have under new business, an ordinance, excuse me, a notice of intent by Councilmember Bender to give, she gives notice of intent to introduce that the next meeting of the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending regulations for second-hand goods stores. That notice is given. Next, Councilmember Yang gives notice of intent to amend at the next regular meeting of the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending code relating to civil rights, adding a new Chapter 143 entitled Target Market Program, amending to provide a new race and gender neutral target market program. That notice is given. Next, we have announcements. Anyone have any announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order, and it's a motion to adjourn to the MCDAs Board of Commissioners, and so that motion is in order.
Second.
Any, well, no discussion. All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to the regular meeting of the MCDAs Operating Committee Board of Commissioners for today. We have two items on our agenda. Item number one is adopting the minutes from the regular meeting held April 25, and the second is the consideration of the appointment of Craig Taylor. What is the commission's pleasure? Commissioner Frye.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I move both items.
Both items have been moved. Further comments, questions? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Misano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair Goodman.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
Seeing no further business before the commission, the commission is adjourned. Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the motion to adjourn, the city council then, will be a motion to adjourn to August 14, 2014, at 11:00 in the morning in the council chambers for the purposes, purpose, excuse me, of receiving Mayor Hodges' 2015 budget address. So August 14, 11:00 a.m. Motion?
All right, so moved.
Second.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Aye.